So I want to welcome everyone to today's Get to Know the Candidate. And I have the immense pleasure to welcome Juan Muñoz, who is a community organizer. He has been really involved with labor for many years of his career. He is a community organizer and he is someone that I know personally really well and that I have literally been on the trenches. We get to talk more about this in a minute when you guys get, you know, when he gets here. So thank you so much for being with us today, Juan. How are you? Welcome. Juan, I You're muted on Facebook. I don't think I can hear you on, on Facebook. I see like, there we go, now you're back. Okay, take it from the top.
Great. And let me know if you, if, you know, I can't be heard or anything. Um, so you know, I, I'm really, really excited to be here. I'm glad to have done a lot of work with you. Um, and you know, now I'm running for, for Linwood City Council here in Southeast LA County. Um, and you know, uh, if folks aren't familiar with this, with this portion of LA, uh, we're sort of, you know, known as the gateway cities, you know? We, we have, we're surrounded by freeways on all sides, right? We have the 710, the 105, the Alameda Corridor. Uh, so a lot of these, uh, places, you know, um, are unfortunately a lot of EJ communities, right? That, uh, we, we face, um, a lot of the, the pollution firsthand every day. Um, and with, with, you know, just so much heavy industry in this region. Um, a lot of these communities out here are flight path communities. Um, so you know, we're, we're right bordered to, to LAX. Um, and so we just face, we're, we're sort of on the front lines of a lot of these environmental injustices. And, um, and you know, I'm excited to be running. I think that in Linwood, we've had an absence of, of creative policymakers to address many of these problems. Um, and, um, you know, we, we've lacked representation for folks that understand labor issues and come from the labor movement. And you know, that's what I'm about.
Yeah. I'm, I'm so glad that we're, uh, you know, that this moment is happening because I know you now for a few years through the work of the Legal Conservation Voters. And for those of you that are not familiar with this organization, we are a PAC. We endorse environmental candidates in, um, in local office here in LA and LA County. And a little, we'd sometimes, uh, go to other places, you know, not just, uh, in, you know, in LA County. But the Legal Conservation Voters, we do a lot of work and I got the chance to, 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 you know, to work with, with you, Juan. Juan, I think I lost you on Instagram, by the way. But, um, and, and you know, sit and interview other candidates, talk about what a good environmental candidate is, you know? Fight the good fight out there for, uh, you know, to, to try to bring like more progressives that are environmentalists, you know, to, to, you know, to support them. So it's, it's so, uh, exciting to see you running right now because you know, this is kind of like, we, we're doing this work, you know? We're like in the trenches. So it would be so great if you can share with us and, and with my audience here on, on social media about your, you know, your, your history and how you got to where you are right now and what, you know, what make you decide, you know, to run for Linwood City Council.
Right, right. So yeah, it, it's actually the most interesting dynamic ever, right? Like, uh, not only for work, but, uh, you know, for obviously my work on the, on the LAL TV. I'm always on the other side of the interview, right? Now, now I'm the one being interviewed and asked all the questions. And you know, I think that, uh, it's, it's interesting to see sort of the reversal. But you know, for me, um, that's been my mission on LAL TV and in every role that I've been in is we really need to bring resources to a lot of these long, underrepresented communities. And so at the basis of, of everything of, of, you know, making someone that's a, that's a good environmental candidate is someone that is coming to the job, someone that is coming into this role with that, with that understanding, right? Like, it's fundamental that folks understand, um, the power of the office and you know, what can go wrong if we, uh, don't recognize the past, the history, right? That, that brought us to the present day. Um, and that don't understand what are some of the tools that I can use? What are some of the things that I can do, um, in this role to prevent that from happening? And, and now, and having subsequent generations deal with, with environmental issues, right? And so, you know, I think that, for example, right? I, I think like for, for folks in the Southeast and in South LA County in general, um, you know, the freeways that we're surrounded with were planned, right? It's not, it's not a, it's not that they just
Let's see this, yeah.
Right, right. They, they didn't just get built here, right? And in fact, I live right next to the 105 freeway, right? Half a mile, uh, from me. Um, and you know, that was the last federal highway built, right? In the 1990s, it was finished. Um, and we literally demolished thousands of homes all across Southern LA County to make that freeway possible. And so, you know, if, if you don't have someone that is going to be brave and, and courageous and say, no, not at the cost of my community, uh, because we already have dealt with so much of this for decades past, then you know, like, that, that's what we need, right? And so, you know, um, when I, when I said earlier, right? That I think that a lot of folks on the council here in Linwood don't come into their, into their office with this sort of, uh, recognition is, is, I'll give you a prime example. So you know, the state legislature just passed, just formalized, um, a, um, uh, the, the rule that will prevent, you know, the, the, the sale of new traditional cars as we know it, right, in, in 2035. Um, here in Linwood, uh, you know, as part of the work that I did, right? I got to interview some of the candidates that ran two years ago. And you know, they, at the time, they were on the planning commission and trying to decide, uh, whether they wanted to approve the building of a new gas station. And you know, and one of my questions to those candidates then was, you know, is that really something that we want to, we want to build? Is that something we want to approve?
Invest, right.
Right. Considering that we have all these pending rules, you know, by then it was introduced by CARB. Um, do we really want to move forward with this, you know? And, and their answer was, yes, we need the revenue for our small city. And to me, that was heartbreaking because it was just like, yes, we do need the revenue. We do need, you know, more funds for, for whatever the things the need, the city needs to provide, but not at the cost of contaminating our soil, not at the cost of bringing further pollution, right? There can be other things that we can do at that site. Um, and you know, it's, it was just shocking to me. And, and so now literally a mile from me here in Linwood, we're, we're going to get a new gas station, even though this rule in, you know, in 13 years will ban the sale of new gasoline-powered
This is, this, again, this is why it's so important to have people that are very clear about putting people and planet first. This is why it's so important to, you know, to get to know candidates and get to know their agendas. And in dismantle all of these ideas that are out there that a lot of times, especially in our communities, if Linwood is in an environmental justice community is in an area with this high pollution, there's a lot of freeways, there is, you know, um, eh, you know, yeah, like industries and such. And, and it's, and it's just, it's, it's just always that tension between how are we going to survive or how are we going to make sure that our health is well or our city's, uh, budget is maintained so that we can, you know, thrive? And I, and I think that there is a way to do both. I don't think they're like mutually exclusive. And I actually think that it's about how we put our values in practice to decide, to, to, to apply what's important to us. So you know, we can invest a billion dollars or a million dollars or $10 in, in fossil fuel infrastructure right now, or we can also do that investing it in green energy. So you know, so it's, it's kind of like two sides of the coin. And of course, this is not so black and white as I'm describing it here. It's extremely political. It requires a just transition from jobs. And I would love to hear from you a little bit about your work also with the unions and like what you're done and how it's so important that at this point of the game, we have a very strong partnership with labor and environment. Because we're not going to be able to do it alone. And for so long, eh, we have been sometimes in the other side of the, you know, of the fight. And, and little by little, we're seeing, you know, a little bit of a, a difference coming in. So tell us a little bit about your experience with being in the labor movement and how you've been able to shape environmental justice issues and environmental issues with your work in, in labor, which sometimes is not so easily, you know, it doesn't work so easily together.
Yeah. So you know, I'm really, really fortunate to, to work for, for Unite Here Local 11, uh, the Hospitality Workers Union. And so we represent all of the workers having to do with, with the tourism industry. So convention centers, airports, uh, hotels, right? That's, that's sort of, uh, are, are one of our, the most things we're known for, right? Our housekeepers. Um, um, you know, and I, and I think that the, the mission at Unite Here is a little bit different, um, than, than other unions, right? And that's that, you know, we understand that it's not enough to simply fight for wages, for healthcare, for benefits, right? Um, you have to do more, right? Because what is the point of fighting, you know, difficult fights, right? It's not easy to, to, to fight against some of these big, the big corporations. Um, what is the point of doing all that? If people don't have livable communities to go to, uh, you know, after their jobs? Or if they can't even afford housing, you know, in, in LA County? And they have to drive out to the IE, to the, uh, to these desert communities far away from their jobs, right? You have to address the whole of, of the person, um, everything that touches them, right? And so, you know, I, I love my union for, for the fact that we do that. We, we, we are in so many different, uh, we advocate in so many different ways for our membership. Um, and always, you know, try to bring them into the fold, right? And, and you know, put them at the front lines of the fight, right? Like, you know, there's, the, one of my jobs is, is to get members to turn out to city council meetings, right? Airport commission meetings and, and planning meetings, right? And so we always have them participate in, in some of these processes where they're typically not in the room, right? It's often, it's often consultants, lobbyists, et cetera. And so, um, I frankly, you know, wish that, that more of the labor movement took that position, right? And, and understood that. And, and I think that that, that has been the fight of many of us, uh, to, to get the, the rest, the broader labor movement to understand that. Um, uh, because as you said, we can't do this alone, right? And, and we're cer- we're certainly not going to achieve any of our, of our biggest goals, um, by not addressing the points of contention, right? What is it, what is it that labor wants to see? And what is it that the environmental movement wants to achieve, right? And we have to bring it together, right? And, and you know, and it is possible, right? I, I got the endorsement of the LA County Federation of Labor. I've gotten endorsed by different segments of the labor movement, right? My union, but also IBW, Local 11, the Neesters, um, and, and United Steelworkers, you know? And, and at the same time, I also got the endorsement of the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters, right? And so it's about electing leaders that, that are going to come in and, and do the work of building a coalition. And that's what I've, you know, that's what my entire work has been. I, I like to say, you know, I, I've always tried to bring together labor and the environment together because there is so much more that unites us, um, and, um, and will help us achieve, you know, what we want to do, right? IBW Local 11, you know, their electricians can build out our charger network, uh, you know, our EV charging infrastructure that we're going to need.
And they are, yeah.
Yeah. And they're, and so, you know, we, we need to part, you know, get them to partner with municipalities, uh, to, to get different cities to commit to building out their infrastructure in their own cities, right? And, and we should have IBW Local 11 members doing that work, right? And I think there's so many, so many, uh, examples, right? Uh, where, where we can, uh, have this just transition and, and, you know, get, get things done.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know that not in, in your community, just like in any other community, the only issue is not about pollution or the environment or, or building new freeways or gas plants next to people's homes. But there's other issues. So would you please tell us, um, what are part, as part of your platform? What are some of the things that you want to, you know, that are like key part of your campaign right now?
Yeah. Uh, my biggest priority above all else is dealing with the housing crisis, right? It's, it's evident, you know, that, that we're, we're in the middle of this deep crisis all across the state. Um, and you know, every city, uh, gets a RENA number, right? Every, every city get, has a, a number of units that they're required to build. In Linwood, in this cycle, we're supposed to build 1,555 units. We are nowhere near, uh, uh, that number of units in development, right? And, um, as you know, I would, uh, one of the biggest powers that, that city councils have are planning and land use.
Yeah, the strategy, yeah.
And you know, and, and here in Linwood, if, if folks are familiar, right? We, we have, uh, a lot of commercial concentrated along Long Beach Boulevard. Uh, Plaza Mexico is sort of the big thing that, that many people in Linwood visit. Um, um, and that entire, that entire stretch, it's about a mile and a half of, of Long Beach Boulevard, this main corridor, uh, that has not only freeway entrances, but it has the Metro Green Line, you know, or now the Sea Line, um, running right above the street. Um, that entire corridor is zoned as commercial use only.
Hmm.
And it's just like, no, we, we need to transform this corridor, uh, so that we allow for the development of housing in, in especially this place where it makes the most sense, right? Like, there's, you know, like, there's access to transit. There's access to existing commercial. Um, and you aren't going to displace anyone, uh, you know, because you can build ground level retail, um, uh, with housing above it, right? Um, and you encourage access to transit, uh, you know, meaning less cars and, and less, uh, sort of impacts in that way. Um, and so I think that that's just one, one key example. Um, you know, the, the metro system is, is ever-expanding, right? The, the Sea Line will now connect to the K Line and, and we're going to have direct access to the airport. There's already talks about moving ahead with the West San Ana branch, which will expose Linwood to a whole other portion of the county.
Yeah.
People want to live here and they want to live near transit if we only create the opportunities for them to do so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, no one is saying, don't do it. I, I like, I will never ride transit, right? People are willing to, to, uh, to try it if we make it easier for them to, right? And, uh, so another one of my, my big things is, is increasing transit ridership, right? Um, it'd be fairly inexpensive for us to, um, to create a partnership with Metro and subsidize transit passes, uh, for, for, you know, a certain number of folks so that they are willing to try transit, right? And, and for some people, price is still, uh, uh, you know, barrier. So let's eliminate that barrier, right? Let's, um, let's help them, um, you know, get a free pass and, and see if we can convert them to be transit riders, right? Um, that has an outsized effect more than what that program would cost. Uh, and just other things that I, that I'm really, really, uh, fighting for as well as, right? In addition to building more housing, we also need to protect, uh, the folks that live here currently, right? And so Linwood, uh, is a renter majority city.
Wow.
You know, um, about 56% of our, of our population are renters. And yet unlike so many other cities, we have no renter protections beyond, um, what the state calls for, right? Um, so you know, unfortunately, the, the current state law on, on renter, on, you know, um, renter protections is, is, it will allow rents to go up as much as 10% this year. Um, if, if someone is paying $1,500 a month in rent, uh, that 10% increase is $150. Uh, that is groceries, that is a bill, you know? That is unsustainable for working families. Um, and so you can, you can do both, right? You can protect existing renters and at the same time push for there to be more housing, um, um, built, right? So, um, I, I definitely want to work on, on doing that as well.
Yeah, there are folks, uh, saying here on the chat that you should make transit free. I am all for making public transit free and making it more efficient, accessible to people. Uh, you know, you, I'm sure you have a lot of folks that live in Linwood, which is outside of Los Angeles, that work in Los Angeles. So you know, you can imagine yourself at 7:00 in the morning driving to LA from Linwood, sitting in your car alone, you know? And, and you know, and causing all this traffic and, and you know, all these emitting all these pollution. So this is something that regionally we could tackle so, so much better than do it individually, simply because we can, you know, we can have a transit system that connects us to other places so we can get people off their cars. Nobody here is saying that we want to take your car away, okay? I hope that people can hear that clearly. Every time I talk about public transit or bike lanes, people think I'm taking their cars away. Now listen, you like your car, I get it, you know? But, uh, but the idea here is that you have options. That maybe every day you can wake up, grab a cup of coffee, read the paper, talk on the phone, you know, do whatever you want, take a nap, you know, while you get to work. And then back and allowing to decongest our, uh, main, uh, artery, you know, uh, freeways and, and, and you know, and, and all around Los Angeles because we have an incredible pollution problem that is, is really everyone's problem. It's not just the city of Los Angeles, it's not just the mayor, it's everyone. It's, it's, it's really, we all need to tackle this together, eh, to find like a solution.
Right.
All right. So, eh, elections are in November, everyone. If you have not figured that out, let me tell you, elections are coming. And if you're not registered to vote, please register a vote right now and register a friend. And if you're not sure, you can go to, um, vote.gov and find out and anywhere. Like, I, I know I have a lot of people that watch my live streams from other places other than California. So you can find out because everybody's going to have elections in November, not just in California. So, um, I know campaigning is hard and especially for people of color. Like, you know, I, I remember when I ran was extremely difficult for me as an immigrant myself. Like, I didn't go to, you know, like, I went to school in another country. I, you know, like, I had my whole network of people are, you know, like, I mean, they're kind of new in my life. I've been, you know, in this country for, um, uh, you know, for 25 years, over 25 years. How hard has it been for you to run for office? What are some of the most challenging things that you have to face as a candidate that are, that is young, that is a candidate of color, that lives in a community that is not very affluent, you know? And that is trying to bring a progressive voice to your community?
Yeah. Um, I think that everyone that's run for office knows that by far the biggest challenge is fundraising, right? And, and trying to get, uh, you know, uh, uh, people to understand, you know, why you need to invest in order to, to, uh, you know, get new leadership, right? Um, I think for me especially, um, you know, sort of one of the pervasive problems, um, uh, in, in Southeast LA, um, and in Linwood in particular, is that a lot of the folks that get, um, uh, voted into office, um, are, take contractor money, right? A lot of this, unlike the city of LA, a lot of the services out in these smaller cities, um, are, are privatized, right? So waste hauling, street sweeping, tree trimming, uh, all of that is done by a private contractor. And so, you know, these are massive contracts, right? Our, our waste hauling contract, for example, is $70 million over seven years. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's very easy, uh, for, you know, these, these very wealthy corporations, uh, to spend lavishly to get their folks elected so that when, you know, it's, it's their time for a contract renewal or something comes up for a vote, they have an easy path to success, right? And, and no one really challenges their vote. So I've, I'm the only candidate, um, that, that I know of in, running for Linwood, uh, that is pledged to not take any money, uh, from, from contractors that have active business in the city of Linwood. And so it's a little bit tougher, right? Because, um, uh, you know, that just means that instead of one $5,000 check, I have to call 40, 50 different people, uh, to, to, you know, create the equivalent of that. And so, um, that's been the toughest part. You know, the other part is, is like, I think the concern is always like, uh, is my message making it to as many people as, uh, as possible, right? And so, you know, I try to be on the ground in the middle of, of, you know, endorsement meetings and, and whatever it may be, um, to try to talk to voters. Um, and so I, you know, we're just, we're just trying to, you know, hoping that, that we have the strategy where we reach the right amount of voters that we need. Um, so I think that that's been
And for those of you that want to learn more about Juan and how to support him, you can go to juanforlinwood.com. If you are on Facebook, on Twitter, on Twitch, or on YouTube, you can watch, uh, you know, you can see it in the, in the screen. Um, uh, let me see, maybe I can, I can try to bring it to Instagram. But for the Instagram folks, you can go to his profile and learn more about him. I cannot address enough how much we talk about the influence of money and politics and how little we put, uh, we talk about our own power on making, on helping good candidates get elected for office. So you know, I feel like for a long time, we have been thinking about, is all this corporate money, is corrupt, is coming into our communities? And through a, you know, through electing, helping elect these candidates that don't represent us. But we also not playing the ball, we're not playing ball, we're not playing the game. And I, I want to make sure, I want to challenge everybody that is watching this, this live stream right now and that is watching this conversation. Because if you are unhappy with the money and politics, you are the solution. You're the solution. And you can get behind candidates that, that, um, that are running for office that are good candidates. Maybe your flavor is, is, you know, city council candidates that, you know, don't get the support like Juan, maybe that's your flavor. Maybe your flavor is the big congressional candidates that we need more than ever in November. We're about to be in big trouble if we don't get, get it together, you know? So whatever it is, in whichever level, I want you to know that you have more power than you think you have.
Right.
I mean it. And your power is go make phone calls for a candidate. Donate your 25, 35, 50, 100, whatever money that you can. Go and, and, and put your friends, you know, throw a little party for your friends and invite the candidate so the candidate can meet your, your, you know, your network. And maybe they can donate. So your $20 now is $100 because all your friends kind of came together and put your monies together. Go door knocking, you know? Maybe that's your vibe, maybe you have people's person, maybe you need to get your steps. Hey, whatever is clever, maybe you need to do your workout. So you need like a whatever amount and you're like, you know what? I'm going to walk three miles today, putting, you know, knocking on doors for ex-candidate. And that's the kind of people power that we need to see now in order to, to, you know, to, to really create a real, um, contrast with the money and po- the millions of dollars that people are, are, you know, are putting, you know, corporations are putting out there to get other candidates elected. So you know, we might not have the money, but we have each other.
Right.
And that's sometimes more powerful than anything else. So again, if you're listening to this conversation, don't be discouraged. Maybe none of the above are for you. Maybe you're not into texting, maybe you're not into calling people, maybe you're not, you don't want to see anybody. But maybe your thing is writing. You are maybe that person. Call the candidate and say, what kind of writing can I do for you? Can I help you do your questionnaires? Can I help you put a newsletter together? Can I help you write talking points for your debates? Like, you have no idea how much help do you need on a regular basis when you're running for office.
Right.
So I want, I want to make sure that you guys know that this is not something that, you know, a lot of candidates like Juan are, you know, really trying to break into an industry and into a world that is not designed for people like us. It's not designed for people of color, it's not designed for young people, it's not designed for women, it's not designed for members of the LBTQ+ community. it's not designed for members of the LBTQ plus community, it's not design, it's designed for a a very specific, you know, circle of folks. So I wanna make sure that you guys know that you also have the power and you can throw down and you can support and you can help elect good people to office eh right now with the skills and with whatever it is that you can give. So please.
I just wanna give, well, uh, like, a a sort of a visualization, right? I, as I've been talking to donors and, you know, a hundred dollars, right? Which which, you know, maybe it's not a lot for some people, right? A hundred dollars can pay for ten union-printed signs. You know, a hundred dollars can can be two thousand texts sent out to to voters in Linwood. So that's the the sort of the the influence that you have, right? You don't need to win an election by paying for, you know, ten different five thousand dollar mailers, right? You, like, like Ara said, you know, if you wanna get your ten thousand steps today, uh, let's get you on a uh to walk a precinct, then you'll get your ten thousand steps and you'll talk to a hundred different uh voters, right? And and, you know, it's just exponential, the amount of reach that you have with just your energy, your willingness to give time and a few dollars, right? Um, and
Absolutely. After this conversation, I'm going to share and post this conversation with you. And, you know, maybe you can share, you just never know who's out there that can help, you know, um, a candidate make it or break it. And this is the kind of community, you know, like, support that we need to see. We need to start seeing, we need to get more involved, we need to get more our hands. And and, you know, we need to get a little more wet, you know, jump in the water and swim. And I think the best, the best time is now. So Juan, um, tell us, what is the best part for you about running for office?
Oh, man, by by far, my favorite part is is talking to voters, right? It's just like the the conversations that that you just have with folks, right? And, you know, like, I, I think that, just again, the the way that folks win in Linwood is sadly not by talking to voters, right? It it's by paying for exactly these glossy mailers that that, you know, just arrive in the mail and let's just try to win on as low information as possible. And so, you know, like, just yesterday, I was talking to a voter and she was like, I've lived here for fifteen years and no council candidate has ever come to knock on my door. And and she was just like saying, you know, like, we, here in Linwood, we we, one of our parks, right, is has been closed for for um many months. Like, the playground is uh, is just been shut down, completely fenced off. And so parents are uh just frustrated, right? That that they had nowhere to take their kids across summer. And and so she was just telling me that, you know, I have two kids and, you know, like, the only place to run around was the yard or I had to drive to another city uh to take them to another public park, right? And and so it's just like understanding sort of these micro-level issues um so that you walk into uh in into these offices, right? And and when you're sitting on the dais, uh, you remember you, these these conversations trigger something for you so that you can make, you know, the better decisions and and uh and understand who's being impacted and how is that gonna affect that family? How can we make sure that we get a quicker timeline, right? When when everyone else is telling me we can't do it? Um, you you need to be able to uh to be grounded in these conversations so that you can fight for what what uh our community deserves. Uh, so that by far is
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree with you. So I'm posting here on the chat, well, somebody said before I I go on on the PSA, um, somebody made a comment on Facebook saying that we need to educate voters on voting for the midterm elections, which is so important, not just presidential because presidential elections also hurt democracy so much because everybody comes out, you know, to vote for the president. But there is school board races that are important. Like, if you if you have children, if you care about the education of of the youth in your community, even if you don't have kids. If you, environmental justice issues, which is something that is very important to the two of us, job creation. So it's like, right now, for example, in November in LA, we're gonna, we're gonna elect a mayor. We're gonna elect city council members. You you are in your city council race. So we need to get, we 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 need to think about voting day like any other holiday.
Right.
Like Thanksgiving, like, you know, whatever holiday that you um celebrate, like New Years, like, I I I can still believe that we don't have of our our day, like, when we vote, it's not a holiday.
Right.
Like any other holiday. We need to make sure that that happens at some point in history, please, everybody. Get on board. But um, but but, you know, we need to, and especially in California, there's no reason why you shouldn't vote when you get your ballot in the mail. It's everyone. So people, please, don't, don't make me come get you. Just do your part. Get involved, get get um, get registered and get, you know, to vote because, you know, because it's so important.
Yeah, can I just, can I just add? So we just are incredibly, incredibly privileged in California that uh you get a ballot in the mail. Everyone gets one. You know, it's it's like literally no excuse to vote. It takes five minutes. You don't need a stamp. A family member can turn in the ballot for you. Like, these are, you know, I I've been out um to Arizona, I've been out to Georgia, I in twenty twenty, right? I I was on the ground training canvassers and and knocking on doors myself to to get, to win the election for Joe Biden, uh, to get Mark Kelly elected in Arizona, and then in Georgia, Reverend Warnock and John Osif, right? That's the, because of these two states, that's the only reason we have a fifty-fifty uh senate, right? Because we won these three seats in incredibly difficult, often dismissed states. But in states like Arizona, they can only dream of of getting uh um ballots uh in the mail automatically, right? Like, there's actually uh an attempt right now in in Arizona uh to eliminate, to make it much more difficult to vote by mail. Um, and and Georgia, right?
Real voter suppression out there.
Yeah, and Georgia, right? Like, I think coming away from Georgia is that, you know, Georgia was not a red state, right? It was a suppressed state. Um, you know, and and there was, there were so many people that were uninspired uh to even partake in elections and you literally just had to motivate them and drag them out of their houses, you know, to go vote and and be inspired and and take action. And so uh, do not take our rights in California for granted because it was only, you know, my my political director, my union often tells me, right? It was only, you know, in the nineteen nineties that California was a red state, just like Arizona. Um, so do not take it for granted. So I'll say that. And then the other thing that I would just add is that um, every, every election is a vital consequence, right? Here in Linwood, um, we had a special election in June, right? And in in many of these small cities, you only have, you only vote for things in the general, right, in November. Uh, but in Linwood, our council referred an initiative um on a five-zero vote um in in June um to basically extend term limits and reset the clock on the number of years um that folks can run. So basically, you know, there was one person on our council that was supposed to be termed out this year. Um, and because of, you know, whatever his intentions may be, either running for higher office or, you know, and or just unwilling to uh so that he could serve for three more terms, right? Get twelve more years. And, you know, and I, as I've been talking to voters, uh, they feel deceived, right? They they feel like they were lied to, right? And and, you know, their 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 whole campaign to pass this initiative was on the premise that that we needed term limits, even though Linwood had already established them more than a decade ago. Um, and and, you know, as I'm, that election, we had four thousand voters uh in a, in oh, out of over twenty-eight thousand registered voters.
Wow.
And in a, in a city that has a population of, you know, seventy thousand something people.
This is when it's, it breaks my heart. It really breaks my heart because, like I said, we we have seen good people running for office that have not made it and could have made an incredible eh monumental difference in their community because people don't come out and vote. So we need to get better at it and and we're, and I think we're working on it. And a lot of it has to do with conversations that we have with our neighbors to making sure that we're educating our youth, that we're making it fun, you know? Like, now that you can vote by mail, why don't you throw a little party? And invite all of us, you know, and like, let's fill out the ballots, bring your ballot. Let's do it together, let's have some drinks. And I think that's such a great way to build community, to have some fun, and to make politics relatable and and accessible. So, yeah, there's so many ways that you can, that you can participate that uh will make a tremendous difference in in, you know, in in our political process in general. Well, uh, so I wanna make sure that everybody knows how to find Juan. Eh, you can go to juanforlinwood.com. Eh, I will post uh this information in the comments also. And, you know, when I share this this uh video out there. Uh, Juan, what are some of the ways, so if somebody wants to, you know, obviously, they can donate to, you know, to your campaign. But what are some other ways in which people can contribute and support you?
Absolutely. So uh, actually, this this week, this Wednesday, uh, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, talking about making it fun, right? We're gonna have a phone bank from six-thirty to eight-thirty, where we're gonna be calling voters. And then afterwards, from eight-thirty to nine, right, when you don't wanna be talking to voters, uh, we're we're gonna have a small social hour and and talk to folks and it's gonna be all on Zoom, it's virtual. You can connect, we're gonna have folks, you know, calling in from Washington DC. Uh, so and and uh and joining and but it's basically a bunch of friends that I went to college with that I wanna support. Um, and, you know, so you can join that. Um, on our website, sign up for our, sign up for our contact form, right? We are gonna be emailing folks, we are gonna be uh texting folks to sign up uh because we're gonna have canvases, we're going to have more phone banks, we're gonna have text banks, right? Um, and, you know, these are all, you know, ways that you can, you can reach more voters without having to, you know, to really donate a dollar, but
Donate a dollar.
Of course, donations help, but but, you know, we, there's, there's the people power aspect of this that that can fuel so much.
Yeah, absolutely. I wanna thank you so much for uh joining me today and for um sharing your story with us and and let us get to know you better. You know, the idea of these live streams is really to give people access to candidates that are, you know, running for office so they can tell us what are some of the problems that are happening in their community and how they're planning to address it. So thank you so much for being here. Everybody, get to juanforlinwood.com and support, you know, a young um organizer running for, you know, city council in his, in his own, in his community in in Linwood. Any last thoughts or comments before we go?
Um, no, I mean, just, just, you know, Linwood matters, all these small cities in southeast LA matters. So, you know, please, please invest and and and, you know, make sure that we're we're uplifting candidates that are gonna do the good work. And and thank you so much, Ara, for for the space and and for for everyone that tuned in.
Absolutely. All right, everyone, thank you so much. And uh I'll see you on, hold on a second. I believe it's Thursday, we're gonna have uh another candidate that we're gonna interview and trying to pack as many candidates so that we can get to know them, uh, you know, before elections. And ballots are dropping very soon in California, for my, for what I understand, if you if you live in California. So stay tuned. But for now, I wanna thank you all for uh being with us tonight and for spending an uh precious time of your day getting to know candidates, getting educated and getting um, you know, and getting involved. So thank you so much, everyone, and I will see you very soon. Bye, Juan, thank you so much. Bye.